Thank you, Brian, and welcome everyone to this August 9, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. I don't think we have any proclamations tonight, so I will call this meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation from Ms. Samantha Nels. Everyone, including the proud mother, stand up.
That be the prayer.
And this will be followed by the pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day, and I pray that you can continue to give us the eyes to see where we can serve others and each other today. Give us a heart of compassion for the needs of others and to make the best decisions for you one another. Amen.
Everyone face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. All right. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gwaltney? Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton?
He's walking.
Oh, Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Is here. Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Nels?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Okay, so you got three absent, but you still have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, next we'll have the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting of July 26, 2021. We entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of and for approval of said minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andres, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight to zero?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, we have board vacancies. We have the, we had a little bit of a switch in terms of getting the names on the HEC at Large Board position. Mr. Dorland withdrew his name, but we had an additional name that was included in there that we, I failed to mention last time. So we still have three candidates. They are set for interviews this Wednesday, beginning at 5:15, for those that can be present. We also have the HEC Ward Three position. That is still open and closes on August 23 at 4:30, so if you know anyone interested in Ward Three, please let them know. All right. Next, we have additions to the, one addition to the agenda. It'll go to the committee referral agenda. It's 07-08-21, request for consideration to amend fiscal year 2021 capital projects fund budget and accept lowest responsive bidder for library parking lot paving project, brought to us by Debbie Faunt, our library director. So with that amendment, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight to zero as well. There are no items on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to the old business agenda. First item is 11-07-21, public hearing, set for tonight, for consideration of assigned variance at 2610 19th Street South, brought to us by Therapy South, Advance Sign, and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from special issues, and I believe, Ms. Andres, are you reporting on special issues tonight?
Yes, I am, and the committee voted five to zero last week to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, I will open this public hearing. And I assume we have a representative from the applicant. If you will, just, I think I saw you already sign in. If you will, just give us your name, and then let us know what this item is, please.
Yes, my name is Megan Ellis. I'm with Advance Sign and Lighting. A few years ago, we applied for permit applications for Therapy South to get their front and side sign. They were approved by variance, and somehow it missed getting paid for. So this was approved through variance by the council, and then somewhere along the lines, it got messed up, and somebody didn't send a check. So I don't know if it was me who didn't relay the message, or if my accounting missed my email, or whatever happened, it somehow didn't get paid for.
And so, Mr. Pugh, you may be able to help me out here a little bit with this question, just to make sure we all understand. The variance was approved?
That's right.
The signs weren't done?
The signs weren't installed.
Were installed?
Yes, and then through a series of events, just recently, the, it was noticed that no permit was ever taken, even though a variance was granted. So they, you know, trying to make things right, applied for a permit, reapplied for a permit. However, the sign ordinance has changed, so I was not in a position where I could approve the permit, because it's an internally illuminated sign.
Got it. So it needs an additional variance under the new sign ordinance before the permit can be issued, even though the old sign was approved?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to avoid my customer losing thousands of dollars when they got approved, and it's my fault that it didn't get paid for.
All right. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council. And if there aren't any, then I would entertain a motion.
Whoop, I guess the proper motion, oh, sorry, did she have a question? Let me know. Is the proper motion to move to?
Yeah.
What he said, but we don't have to add anything onto it.
No, it's just to approve the variance for the internally.
That they already got approved. Okay, I got it, okay. I'll move to approve.
All right. Motion from Ms. Andres, second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is 99. Thank you. Resolution 2199, and the vote was eight to zero. All right. Next item, 12-07-21, public hearing set for August 9, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of assigned variance at 2719 19th Place South, to permit one additional unlighted wall sign at the rear of Jack and Jill's and one at Sykes Shoes, brought to us by Rod Burchell of Alpha Graphics and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with another report from special issues. Ms. Andres?
Yes, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Alamon and seconded by Counselor Sims.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will open the public hearing. And if you will, just give us your name and tell us about the sign.
Rod Burchell, they're just requesting, I'm with Alpha Graphics, Jack and Jill's requesting a sign marking the entrances in the back of the building, so there's very limited parking in the front, and there's no parking around the back, so they'll know which entrance, so they don't walk all the way around the building to go in the front, so that they know that there's availability there.
Okay. Anyone else from the public speak for or against this item? Not then I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments or questions from council.
Just to clarify, is this a shared foyer, once you go into the entrance door there?
Yeah, you go in, and it goes to, I guess, it opens up to both sides of the store. I mean, it's open between the two stores.
It's a shared storefront, or the two separate stores are shared?
Yes.
Have a shared entryway and pathway between? Okay, thank you. Mr. Hart?
Is this a variance because they're asking for two additional signs on the building that aren't allowed? It meets all the other size requirements?
Mr. Pugh, I'll let you answer that.
The sign ordinance permits one per storefront. They actually, there are actually two storefronts, two businesses, but they have a shared internal area.
On the front?
So one per, that's correct. One per storefront is permitted. They're asking for signs on the back, so.
And they meet the size requirements for this?
They would meet the size requirements of the, of permitted signs, yes.
So it's just a number?
It's just a number.
Okay. Ms. Andres?
Would it be possible to combine that into one sign, you know, as far as Sykes, Jack and Jill into one sign? I think it'd look better.
Go back to the customer, Rod, and see if that's required.
Any other questions or comments?
There are two different signs off the front, right?
Yes.
So different, so we're just making sure that it's available.
Yes, the front is two storefronts, each with its own sign, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Jones?
It's a funny story, but when I was growing up, my mom took me to Jack and Jill, and I thought I had to go to Sykes, that was like, there was no other option. So I don't, I don't see any issue with that. I mean, you really, you're trying to avoid people going all the way around to the front, and we want to make accessibility easier for everyone. I don't see an issue with having those additional signs right there.
And draw people to the parking that's not right there on the main track?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
All right. Motion from Ms. Nels.
Second.
Second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's also eight to zero, and it'll be resolution 21100. Thank you very much. All right, next item, 13-07-21, public hearing set for August 23, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to adopt new zoning districts for the Homewood Downtown District, amending the city's zoning ordinance to add Article 8, entitled Downtown District, to Appendix A, zoning of Homewood's Code of Ordinances. This came from the Planning Commission with a vote of five to three to one, five to three to one, for a favorable recommendation, as brought to us by the Planning Commission and myself. This item will be carried over tonight, because it's already set for public hearing in our next meeting on the 23rd. Next item, 05-07-21, request to consider bond refinance option, brought to us by Mike Dunn of Stiefel, Robert Burgett, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. And we will start this with a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met Monday, August 2nd, and voted four to zero to recommend approving the refunding as presented by Stiefel.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, it's an ordinance to authorize the issuance of a not exceeding $7,000, $7 million principal amount of general obligation warrant Series 2021A, and not exceeding $71,500,000 principal amount of taxable general obligation warrant Series 2021B. First article defines, deals with definitions. Article two deals with representation of warranties. Article three deals with the warrants. Article four deals with redemption of the warrants. Article five deals with the sources of payment. Article deal, deals with the warrant fund. Article seven deals with sales and delivery of the warrants. Article eight deals with miscellaneous provisions of the ordinance.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions or comments about this from council?
I want to thank Robert for giving us a summary of this, because as I mentioned, our friends from Stiefel, everybody speaks in bond speak, and it's hard to understand what's really going on here. And so this is helpful, just to be able to see this and understand, you know, what we're doing and how it's being done. And he did it in the very last minute for me.
Okay. And we do have the guys from Stiefel here, if anyone's got any questions. Yes, here.
Did we ever get information about the related cost, attorney fees, underwriting costs, that sort of thing, total, or total estimated amount?
So, Mr. Burgett, is that the amount that's on here?
That's the copy.
I'm sorry, sir.
The issuance cost?
That's on here.
Yes, so the issuance cost.
That's, was, was nine tenths of one percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Nine tenths of one percent. Anticipated to be $600, $6,210.
For, and that, that includes not, that includes for a lot of things, rating agencies, council, underwriting, verification agent, escrow agent. That's everything rolled into one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, you know, that number is subject to change based on the amount that's issued and everything, but that's a very close proportion.
Because it's a percentage?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
And the suggested bond refunding of 51.490 million, is that what is, was read and by Mike, Mr. Kendrick?
I thought he read 71, so that's.
$71,500,000 taxable, and $7 million taxable.
That confused me.
His resolution gives leeway for the bond, I mean, if something happens dramatically tomorrow, and they want to sell more and save them money, more money, that's the way his resolution is written.
Do we know what the 10-year yield was this, today? What did the 10-year yield end at?
133.
133? So it's gone up.
It went up, went up today, and may keep going up.
And we originally, at some point, a week or so ago, we were looking at about a $6.5 million, $6.4 million refund, and now it's 6,200,000. That's just due to the interest rate change.
But yes, so they have leeway to do more bonds, depending on what the market conditions are, but this is what would be proposed under today's interest rate.
I have a couple of questions. Number one is, I know Mr. Kendrick sent the ordinance today, but I, in all honesty, I mean, I haven't had a chance to look at it in much detail, so I'm just wondering, was there any, who has been involved all along? Have you, Robert, been involved as far as like crafting the ordinance and as far as the terms and so forth?
No, sir, I don't do legal speak. Mr. Kendrick wrote the ordinance. Now, we.
Bond counsel.
I'm sorry, bond counsel wrote the ordinance.
Who is the bond counsel? Excuse me.
So to answer your question, there are a number of people involved with bond counsel rights, the ordinance. I think it's fair to say that they are taking information from a number of different people and coming up with that as rules, the recommendations as Stiefel was.
I can generally address that.
Sure.
Bond counsel writes what information gave from Robert and Melody and the city, in conjunction with the proposal that was presented to the last meeting with Mr. Dunn and Stephen Gary. So bond counsel has to meet the legal requirements, but the terms and conditions, or essential terms and conditions are really dictated by the city and/or the proposal.
And let me, so this actually started, in fact, it was in March of this year when we started the first bond refunding, and we provide the information, they did their due diligence, and they suggested to the city that we wait, because the numbers weren't, weren't favorable.
It started in the year.
It started during the election, spoke, it started between, it started between the runoff, the run-off. When I thought it was me and Frank.
So, I mean, it's been in the work for some time, and then they came back to us about three weeks ago and said the market's very favorable, and they asked us to provide the information, and then that's when they spoke with the council president, finance director, mayor, about moving forward with it.
Thank you. And I knew in committee last week, there was reference to, you know, the conversation, I actually thought last week there was reference to it. It initially started or was looked at in February or March of 2020, so I wasn't sure how long it had been going on. But I also know that last week, I believe, Mr. Dunn wasn't able to attend, and there were a couple of questions for him at the time, and I just wondered if he had anything that he could come and speak to as far as this evening, just kind of an overview of what wasn't able to be presented last week.
Sure. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I apologize I couldn't be here last week. I know Gary stood in and answered questions. But you're right, this process actually started in February of 2020, when we were looking at rates at that time, right before COVID hit, and very favorable rates. There were some other people that had recommended doing a larger financing than we ultimately recommended, and we've been watching it for the last year and a half. So last year, when it initially started, February, March, somewhere in that timeframe, interest rates went back up, the refunding got put on hold. We watched over several months, as Melody referred to. We did a piece of the deal last September, so you took some interest rate risk off the table. We did a smaller financing, saved about $5 million at that time on that financing. We intentionally did not refund all of the bonds, because we felt there could be a better opportunity to do that in the future. And so as rates came back down again recently, it hit a level where it made sense to take another bite at the apple, so to speak. We're still not refunding all of the bonds, we're leaving part of the bonds unrefunded. The savings that are generated in today's market for the bonds we're suggesting to refunding are significant savings. I think it's about a 13% present value savings, which industry benchmark, base benchmarks around 3%. So it's an opportunity to take some more interest rate risk off the table, put some savings aside, but still, again, leave part of the bonds for a future refunding when market, when market conditions were more favorable at that time. So that's, that's kind of where we are and how we've gotten here.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I did have just a follow-up question. One thing I think that was discussed last week was about the reconciliation bill from the feds and the way this could impact, you know, the timing of this, and, you know, there's kind of an opportunity cost there if we act now, and then that happens, and I just wondered if there's any new information on that. And also, there was a discussion about, you know, the market has moved 165 points in the past two years, and so kind of looking at, or the rates, so just looking at, you know, just kind of what the risk is in consideration of this. I mean, can you, can you kind of weigh that out?
Sure, sure, and Gary can jump in as well. There was a point in time earlier this week, this year, that we were hopeful that Congress would allow tax exempt advance refundings, which were taken off the table in 2016, okay? So you only have one opportunity to refund tax exempt bonds prior to the call date. There was, our industry was more optimistic at that time that something would happen, and part of that was driven by, that change carries a cost to the treasury, and so in the past, there'd always had been the debate about, well, if we reinstate tax exempt advance refundings, where's the offsetting money going to come from? And candidly, in our industry, when Congress was sending out trillions of dollars, the additional cost of tax exempt advance refunding really didn't seem to be that much of a factor anymore. So a few months ago, we were more optimistic that that would happen. It hadn't. And in the, the bill that's being passed, that has been negotiated between the Republicans and the Democrats, there's nothing in there that relates to reinstating tax exempt advance refundings. On the bill that the Democrats are promoting, there's nothing in there on advanced tax exempt refunding. So that issue continues to not be addressed by Congress. So we've kind of lost our optimism of it being addressed, but if it were, if it were to come back, there's still, what, $25 million?
Twenty-five million left.
It's $25 million worth of other bonds that, you know, if that was reinstated, I would think you probably would want to go ahead and advance refund those bonds on the tax exemption.
And we discussed last week and throughout the process, since early 2020, we have always done what we call a break-even analysis of how much would taxes and rates have to go up comparing these options. We've done that continuously. If that law was reinstated, the difference in that hypothetical, you know, coming back versus what you're doing now for this refunding is about 50 basis points in taxes and rates would have to make them the same. So that's a much tighter than the 165 you're referencing, which is what rates would have to do between now and 2026, taxes and rates would have to raise. So that's just a comparative point, that the difference in those is about 50 basis points. And like Mike said, just all hypothetical, there's no taxes and advance refundings that are not in any proposed legislation at this point.
The, you know, one of the things, all of this money coming from Washington, D.C. is obviously unprecedented. Normally, those kind of things would be inflationary, which would cause interest rates to go up in the future, but we're really in uncharted territory. I mean, what may happen between now and when the bonds are currently callable, that's a, that's a hard one to call, you know? But in the short run, we were hoping that tax exempt advance refundings would be reauthorized, and there would be an opportunity to take advantage of that, and they have not.
Are we getting tax exempt bonds? I thought, I thought we are, because we have to use it for infrastructure.
We're refunding with taxable bonds, but we are, the refunding's being structured in a way where the cash at closing, the savings that are being taken in the means of, for capital projects, we're financing that piece with tax exempt bonds, because that can be done with tax exempt bonds. So the refunding itself is segregated into taxable bonds, so the larger part of your deal is taxable bonds. Current market is how much in proceeds it would be available that we're doing.
6.02 million, as of this afternoon, that would be eligible for tax exempt capital improvements for the city.
So if we told you to make those taxable, I mean, taxable, we're going to get less money, and we can use it for other things?
That's correct. Part of the, you know, part of the driver is that the city has capital project needs, but also by doing it tax exempt, you get a lower yield on that seven, you know, up to $7 million portion of the offering. So it creates a lower overall borrowing cost, allows you to access lower tax exempt rates where you can't.
And it provides you a better opportunity in the future for refunding those bonds.
All right. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just wanted to mention just a couple of things. The, as, as part of this process, as we've gone, gone along, I've continued to ask for recommendations within the city, within the mayor's office, and they've been, they've been involved in the whole, the whole process. And, and I would say probably one of the highlights was, was through the bond ratings calls, where we were, I mean, we have a lot of, a lot to be proud of in terms of our ratings. They're one of the top ratings in the state for municipalities, so Moody's and Standard and Poor's made a lot of comments about that. They made comments about our fiscal policy and how they appreciate that we go above and beyond in terms of a fiscal policy standpoint. I've gotten recommendations from Mr. Burgett, who has, who's recommended this, Ms. Salter has recommended this, at one point, hope, hope you'll say that tonight, too, as assistant finance director. The mayor has expressed, as you know, a lot of interest in a lot of capital projects that are really on the horizon for the city, and we've mentioned that in the bonds call. So any comments you want to make on that? I mean, you were part of those calls.
Gary, why don't you speak to some of Moody's and S&amp;P's observations?
Yeah, both of the rating agencies gave glowing compliments to the city. Your liquidity levels are very strong. Your property value, sort of market value per capita, is among the strongest in the state. Your budgetary performance, even though it's unaudited in fiscal '20 in light of COVID, was outstanding to have a break-even year, and certainly looks great for fiscal '21. We were able to show them monthly sales tax collections that really demonstrated that things have come back, and you're going to have a max sales tax collection year in 2021. So all those things led to them, you know, writing glowing reports for us to show to prospective investors, you're AA+ with S&amp;P, AA2 with Moody's. That's one and two notches from the best you can do. And S&amp;P even spoke about the hypothetical concept of AAA someday, which has never been done before in review of the cities that we've done back, I've been a part of since 2016. So things all appear to be in very healthy condition, and they see the continued improvements by, you know, your administration and their finances over the years.
Just a general comment on, on market and where interest rates are today. I mean, we, we actually have clients that are borrowing new money on a taxable basis, where they really don't know what their capital expenditures might be, but they want to go ahead and lock down these interest rates and set that money aside for future capital projects. Montgomery Water Sewer is a strong client, AAA rated credit, and they recently borrowed $75 million on a taxable basis, just to bank the money for future capital projects. So there are a lot of issuers who are taking advantage of these extraordinarily low interest rates. I've been in the business for a long time, as evidenced by my gray hair, and what we've observed in the last couple of years on these low interest rates has been absolutely observed in the last couple of years on these low interest rates has been absolutely remarkable. And we, you know, we came from a 10-year Treasury yield just a few months ago. It was a 176, I think. And I think generally people thought we were going up from there. And we have had a tremendous rally. The 10-year got down actually to a 112 in the last couple of weeks. And there's been some economic news, it's good economic news related to jobs and good news in the economy is bad news for bonds. So, we have lost ground, you know, in the last week with interest rates going back. I don't, I can't say where they might be a year from now or even a week from now. But even with rates having gone up a little bit in the last couple of weeks, they are at extraordinarily low levels.
Mr. Dunn, would you say this is a correct statement, that if we do this and rates go down, we made a mistake? If we do this and rates go up, we, we were correct?
Well, if you do this and rates go down, could you have saved more money? Yes. If rates go up, well, your savings would have been less. Yes. I guess I would equate that to, you know, look, if you sell a stock at a certain price and you make a profit, and it goes up from there, well, you could have made more if you wait, but you took a sure thing off the table. So, you're taking a sure thing off the table and leaving yourself another opportunity in the future to take another bite at the apple. So, we see it as a, as an opportunity to mitigate interest rate risk, but give yourself another opportunity in the future as well. But sure, the math is, if rates go down, you would save more money, and if rates go up, the economics would, would say you did the right call.
Just to offer the context, I know I've said this to Finance Committee last week, but when this was initially started in discussion in early 2020, competitor made a proposal to refund the entire callable balance, about 7.5 million in net present value savings in total for everything. So, you got 5 million of savings last fall, and then this is a projected 6.5 as of today. So you're already at 11.5, 4 million ahead of that, with 25 million left for future refinancing. So, already 4 million ahead, and we think that the approach to monitor this and take it piece by piece, thus far has proven beneficial.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
Somebody?
Sorry. Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Jones.
Is there a discussion on unanimous consent or no?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm just, sorry, I, I'm still, because unanimous consent obviously means we're going to go ahead and we'll vote on it tonight. And I know we're missing a couple of people, but I think it was, they were all on Finance Committee.
They were.
Okay. But my main issue is still, honestly, I haven't had a chance to review the ordinance because it came through. So wait, it's hundreds of pages. Now, it comes through a bond council, right? And the bond council is someone we're paying through this, is that right?
Sure.
Okay. And so, were there, I mean, is it the same standard agreement that we have negotiated in the past? We're just changing the numbers and the dates essentially, or are there different things to, to negotiate? Like these numbers for, you know, how much is paid for the bond counselor?
So.
The, the entity stifled, for example?
Yeah. So, the, the ordinance itself is, follows a standard format that, you know, yeah. So, that, that's just the legal language. With regard to the rates and the amounts, yeah, I mean, look, anything is, I will tell you that this, from my experience, this overall cost is consistent, at the very least, with what is paid, generally paid in these deals. I, I don't have any concern about nine tenths of one percent for the overall cost of this, because if you look at deals and how they, they work across the state, some are a little higher, some are a little lower, but this is, this is within a reasonable range for what we, what people are charged for this. And I think that's all we can ask for, and I think, quite frankly, we're getting very good advice for that money and very good service for that money. So, from my perspective, that's not a concern. Because, like I said, I've gone through this a few times and I've seen what, what these deals cost. But yes, everything in here, you have to have what the cost is, you know.
Can I say one thing, Mr.?
Sure.
The cost of issuance is less than it was for the last transaction.
Counselor, I have one question about that. Are attorney fees listed under miscellaneous or are they listed here?
Bond council.
Bond councils.
Is that all, that's everything related to attorney fees is under bond council?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, so to not, so this first vote is just unanimous consent. It's just amount voting on it tonight, which gives them, the sooner we get it done, the sooner they can review the market and take advantage of whatever pops up. And so, that, that's what we're, that, that's what unanimous, the point of unanimous consent is tonight, as well as the fact that we usually, well, we usually consider unanimous consent with, with any sort of ordinance like this, or with any ordinance period. So it's not unusual to do unanimous consent. But, but yes, that's in terms of timing, from my perspective, that's the concern is, the sooner we allow them to take advantage of the market, the better, the better universe we have of getting a better result.
The form of the ordinance is the same as, as was used last year.
It's just a standard.
It would be an identical form of the ordinance, just with the applicable numbers plugged in for this year.
It's the same form as since last week, with the blank still there as the number of cases. So, this is the same.
Yeah, I think the only change, change really, Mike, that happened is we.
Last week, the taxable was A.
Yeah.
Taxes at B.
Yeah, and so we changed that. Yep.
All right. Any other?
I think they laid that out, yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, to reiterate, I mean, from, even in one week, we, we've lost a little bit with the unfortunately positive economic news effect at the bond market. So we've lost, so if we, if we, if we don't handle it tonight, I mean, we're, we're at risk of, of losing further and not maximizing our return on this. But this is my, my view on it. But I respect everyone's opinion on that.
Well, and the reason I wanted to discuss it from the unanimous, unanimous consent standpoint is because basically that's, when we're saying the ordinance as is, as written, you know, we're accepting and, and not having further time to review that. So that's why I wanted more information.
Sure.
On, you know, what has been approved before the city before, because it is a rather lengthy agreement. So thank you.
Sure.
Unfortunately, this is a medical, for any degree, quite honestly, although very sophisticated material as to its transaction, the language is what's required by law to be able to be able to issue these documents. So, it's not substantially different than any I've seen in the last 25 years.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm, I'm new at this, so I appreciate the guidance.
No, no, no.
No problem. All questions are good questions.
And it's a, it's a big deal we're doing. I mean, it's, but, but we have, quite frankly, it's, it has continued to move up since we first started talking about this, because it was 1.17 two weeks ago.
Yeah, unfortunately, you have to get ratings.
Yeah, it's a process for us. Everybody, anybody they deal with, I'm sure.
Yeah. A lot of this is taking the time to get everything in place as quickly as possible so that they can take advantage of the rates when they're the best. And, and so the, the quicker you move on it, the, the better it ends up working. But.
Which merits a comment that should have been made earlier. Appreciation to staff, to Melody and Robert, because this was pulled together in a very fast timeframe to try to take advantage of the, the market. So, pulling all the information together, putting the preliminary official statement together, getting with the rating agencies and all that, was done in as short a timeframe as physically as possible. So, and it was a pretty big burden on the staff to do that. So we appreciate their, their efforts on that.
Yep. While moving the budget. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Ms. Salter, if you will do a roll call vote, please. And again, this is on the unanimous consent.
Yes, sir. And then for the record, the Counselor Walton. Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Did you name his consent? She said?
She said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she said no. I'm sorry. I thought I heard her say no. Sorry. That's why I was waiting. Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Naums?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay, so you have unanimous consent, sorry.
All right. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
And I assume that's a motion for approval, Mr. Walton?
Yes.
And Ms. Naums?
Yes. Second.
Okay.
2811, if that is correct.
All right. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes. Counselor Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Does that mean?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
The mask.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Jones?
I'm, I'm sorry. Actually, I'm going to abstain at this point.
Abstain?
Yes. Just because I haven't read the ordinance and I, that's on me. So I'll do better next time.
Okay. Counselor Jones?
Yes, can you hear me?
Critic. Counselor Naums?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. You have one nay and one abstain.
No, no nays and one abstain.
I'm sorry. Okay. I thought Ms. Gier said no. Okay.
All right. So that is eight to zero to one.
Eight, zero to one.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, guys. We appreciate the hard work.
We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of y'all and we appreciate the relationship very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 060721, request to consider budget amendments to fiscal year 2021 budget brought to us by Robert Burgett, Finance Director, and Melody Salter, City Clerk. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval of these budget amendments for FY 2021.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero and will be Resolution 21101. All right. Next item, 070721, request for consideration to become an official fan guide sponsor for the annual Birmingham Bowl, brought to us by Miles Huff Stutler and our own Barry Smith. And another report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval of funding for this. It's $1,180 from the advertising fund. It's budgeted 0111570500. So four to zero from Finance.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero and is Resolution 21102. Next item, 150721, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for mutual aid with the city of Estevie Hills, brought to us by Chief Nick Hill. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Walton?
Yes, the committee met on August 2nd and voted five to zero to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counsel Harden, seconded by Counsel Wolverton.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for Public Safety. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's also nine to zero and will be Resolution 21103. Next item, 090721, request for consideration to work in the city right away at 2915 Linden Avenue, brought to us by Shelley and Ron Smith of Pebblehurst Golf and Putter Lab, and our own Wyatt Hue. And we'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes. Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval pending the indemnification agreement.
All right. So we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's also nine to zero and will be Resolution 21104. All right. That brings us to the committee referral agenda, or the, excuse me, the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Naums, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine to zero. Brings us to other new business. First item is 040821, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 873 Forest Drive, brought to us by Tom and Winspyre and Wyatt Hue. That public hearing will be set for our next meeting, August 23rd. Next item, 050821, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at 2614 19th Street South, which is wealth management to permit two internally illuminated wall signs, and I believe it's also for one extra for a wall sign, brought to us by Wyatt Hue. That public hearing will also be set for our next meeting on August 23rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Last item is 060821, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of July 26, 2021 through August 9, 2021, brought to us by Robert Burgett, our Finance Director, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk. Mr. Jones?
I yield the floor to Mr. Walton.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Jones. I reviewed the invoices and didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary, and we make a motion for approval.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Walton, second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero and is Resolution, what else? All right. And that brings us to the end of the agenda for tonight. Mr. Mayor?
I actually don't have anything.
All right. Mr. Walton?
I will, I assume Finance at 5:00 PM?
Yeah, we only need about 15 minutes.
Whoa!
That's great.
Glad you're excited.
I don't have any. I will say, also Public Safety at 5:15, 15 minutes, and I have no comments.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Gier?
I'm going to take my mask off so I don't get misunderstood. I don't have any comments. Happy end of summer and see you next time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
Actually, I think I, can you remind me, was the item that I had sent out on Friday to make it on the committee referral as an addition for work in the city right away?
I don't think so. I think it's going on the next one. Unless we, unless we need to.
I sent it, I think to you.
You did. It was after the thing.
Right.
We can, if it's time sensitive, I mean, we can go, we can amend everything at this point, but if it can wait one more time, then.
Yeah, I think you can probably wait.
Okay.
That's all right.
I missed it too. So, when I was reviewing.
Well, I missed it just now.
No problem. We, we all did it.
You have one new item. Two, two new items.
Which I don't know anything about.
It's, it's really about just bringing something into compliance. I don't, I don't think it will take terribly long.
Is it ready to be discussed?
Yes.
Okay. And then what was the other one?
It's the one above it, planting trees in the right way.
Okay. And that one is also ready?
As far as I know, I don't, I have not asked that question.
I, I can speak to that issue. It's, yeah.
Yeah, it's ready?
Yeah. In fact, I need to talk to you about, I've got a question.
So what do you, we think 20 minutes?
Sure.
Should be enough?
Okay, we're going off the 15-minute increment again. I like it. I like it.
That works.
We could do 15, but I don't know how tight that's going to make it.
Let's do 20.
10 minutes for each item. All right.
All right.
Sorry.
It's good.
Be setting for 5:30. 20 minutes. Yes. All right. The only, yeah, the only thing, I think I I, the only, yeah, the only thing I think I had tonight, I sent some pictures to Brian, but my grandfather turned 96 last week. Yeah, I was just really grateful for his influence in our lives and the fact that he is still around and we get to spend time with him. So we went over this weekend. He loves carrot cake, so no stores make it. Apparently it's a seasonal item, but I made some carrot cake and we went over and had lunch and enjoyed time with him yesterday. He got some kisses from the baby and then he actually, since COVID, you know, I think with all COVID has brought, I think it's important for us to remember those that maybe aren't in a position to be as resilient as, as we are, that might have different resources or a different way of life currently. And I think for, for somebody like him, he's a reminder of all those things that have changed significantly for him in less than two years. So he lost my grandmother, so his, his wife nearly 70 years. And then shortly after that, COVID kind of shut everything down and he was still working full-time. So last fall, he was not going to be allowed back on campus at Mississippi State and he decided Zoom was for the birds and so he retired. But he went ahead and published, or finished writing an autobiography, which just went and got published. I don't know, Brian, did you have that picture too? Or did you already show it? Did he already show it?
It didn't come through.
It didn't? Oh, come on. Anyway. I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it online, Brian. Anyway, he, he, he's been through a lot and I think it's just.
I got it.
Yeah. So it's just a reminder that, you know, there are other people that are, you know, in different states of health and age and wellness. And so I'm thankful for this community. And, you know, as challenging as decisions have been made recently, I am actually very impressed because the school board had a very tough decision, I think, last week. And I was actually reminded by a parent of a child who was not the child I was referencing with a neighbor, who caught me at the pool and said, you know, I'm just not, I'm not real sure about this mask thing again. And I said, you know, it's not a big deal for me personally, but I think it's important to think about those that are more compromised, immune system wise and whatnot. And I referenced a different family that I had gotten an email from and then ran into a different neighbor this past weekend and said, well, I talked to that, that friend that you were talking to at the pool and she said that you said something that made, made, made her really think about my daughter, who is very compromised and usually spends at least a month in the hospital every year. And she actually did not last year for the first time in her life. So anyway, I know there's, you know, there's always difficult decisions to be made for all of us. And, you know, we're all, we're not always gonna agree one way or the other on, on every item, but I just appreciate the fact that people are considering and thinking about, about those difficult issues from all sides. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
I must feel like I've already talked enough tonight, but thank you for the time nonetheless. So, yes, just along the theme of return to school, it's been referenced. My son, Jackson, who turned four last month, began his first day of pre-K at Hand in Hand Early Learning Center this morning. So excited about him starting today and my son, Charlie, at his freshman orientation. So kind of go in different directions right now, but so excited about the new school year. I think it's gonna be a great one and just really excited for everyone to be back in person for learning. And so really, you know, thanks to our, our school board and our school system for working hard to make that happen. And also just please keep an eye out for the next Beautification Board meeting. Details should be coming soon. Just check the, the city website, but it should be next Monday around noon. We're trying to do those in person here at City Hall, but details and agenda to follow on the city's website under the Committees tab. So please just keep looking for that. And also thanks to the mayor for meeting with some of the representatives with the Beautification Board last week to kind of talk through his vision and some opportunities for the board going forward. So really excited about, you know, really maximizing the expertise, expertise and strength of that group. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Just a couple of comments. Finance will be at 5:00 and, yeah, we don't have, we only have two items to go over. And, and that is what's good about Homewood. We don't always agree. I didn't agree with Mr. Wolverton's comments, but about the masks, but we've got a great school board and we've got a great superintendent and they're always open to hearing other people's thoughts on it. But I appreciate all that they do and I hope that we can focus on things that we can unite around and not divide us. So I hope, I hope that's in, in the future for, for Homewood. I went to the pool yesterday and I have never seen so many people in all my life. And I mean, it was unreal, unreal. And just had a great time. And then lastly, you were talking about Jackson and, and my daughter is starting, she'll be teaching fourth grade in Chattanooga on Thursday. So she is getting all of her class ready and all that stuff. So I'm really excited about, about her, her career and she's really excited about, you know, about doing that. So just wanted to share that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Naums?
Yes, I just wanted to share, as y'all probably know, I've spent a lot of time in Waco, Texas. And surprisingly, I'm always here, but I've spent a lot of time in Waco, Texas. And since Samantha has graduated with her masters, I, you know, don't have as many trips to make out to Waco. But one point that I make when I go to cities, even if I just go to Irondale or Alabaster, wherever, I try to make a point to connect with city officials who are in my same district ward, you know, who have the number four, just to, you know, streamline who I'm gonna talk to instead of trying to, you know, reach everybody. And just try to learn from them and gather what they're doing in their cities. And I had the chance to do that with the District Four rep in Waco, probably started connecting with her probably a year ago when she was newly elected to the council and kept in touch with her and finally got a chance to meet her in person. And she presented me with the Waco CPN. And there it is.
Nice, nice.
So I was really honored by that. And I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of her. We exchanged so many photos and what have you on Instagram and things like that, that I forgot to include our photo, but maybe I'll share that next time. But, yeah, yeah, we all need pens and. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Start saying wearing one.
I lost, actually lost my last one. You gave it to me. I know I do.
We may need some more of those. Ms. Andrews?
You need to join us at the Council Roundtable. That's the whole point, the Council Roundtable. So come on, next, later this month. Okay, I will first start by setting special issues for 5:50. She's got to sign, oh, no, she's got a front yard fence variance. Oh, yay. She's got a front yard fence variance request and a sign variance request. So what do you think, Alex? 20 minutes?
Yeah, one, just, I would say 6:15.
To 6:15. Okay, so then I'll go ahead and set P and D for 6:15. I just wanted to get, first of all, I wanted to mention that right now water is being impacted on the lower end of Windsor, Devon area around Mountain Brook Parkway into Shades Crest Parkway. Should be back on in about four hours, if anybody's watching live. I wanted to also mention, I saw where my notes are. I sat on, I am, Berkeley and I are the Homewood Representatives for the Freshwater Land Trust, the Littergitter Grant Committee. And I sat on that call on Friday, I think. And the litter getters all throughout Jefferson County to date have collected 10,000 pounds of trash.
I know.
And 26% of that is recyclable. So that is huge news. That's really great. And then also huge news, I am meeting, Chris Thacker and I are meeting with the Water Works on Friday to discuss the paving schedule. So for Ward 5. So that is really big news. They really, we, we were headed out to dinner on Friday night at 7:00 and those guys were working on the curb repairs, which, I mean, I know it's been three solid years of just torture, but the subs for the Water Works were out at 7:00 on Friday night fixing our curbs. So it's been a lot, but we will be talking about paving on this Friday. So that's.
Something where they pay for how long now they're actually like.
Yes. And the reason, right.
They patch it, they patch.
They patch, yeah. And they mill, they'll mill and pay, repave. But what happened was, see, Spire was there for like two solid years. So, and then Berkeley was like, don't get, don't think we're getting paid because you're not, because Water Works is coming in right behind. So they had the two stacked up. So normally Spire would have gone in and repaved, but. But right, because Water Works is coming right behind it. So we've, we've had utility work, it's been three years. It's been three years.
Yeah.
It's been crazy. I mean, just that Yorkshire, Rumson.
Rumson's been worse because it started with construction down at the bottom.
They had Robinson Morton, the sidewalk, Spire, and then the Water Works and it's just been a mess. So.
So is Water Works, is that not Water Works? It's not Spire?
Oh, that's a good question. Spire did a little bit. JJ, Mayor, do you guys know? That's actually a really good question. I think it's Water Works. Part of it's Water Works. Yeah. I think it's Water Works. Spire did a little bit on Yorkshire, but I really do think it's Water Works. And they, I have to say, you know, I know we all give Water Works a really hard time, but they have been so responsive to me. They really have been. And, you know, I, I had a complaint from a constituent about the quality of the curb repair and they, they have been very responsive to everything that we've brought to them. So I really do, it's been a great, I had a great experience with Spire and I was worried that it wouldn't be the same with Water Works and absolutely has been. So that's all I have. Yep, coming your way.
Just very quickly, what makes Homewood great? We could say a lot of things. I found out through a guy I know whose son was involved about the wiffle ball league. Most people might know about that, but, you know, these young kids put together an incredible league with a spreadsheet and, and schedule and all that. I think there are 12 teams playing wiffle ball. Anybody can play. And the only criteria is no parents get to come be part of it. And they made it on to one of the nightly news, one of the news stations did something on it. And I've been waiting for it to, to make it out into the public ground because I thought it was such a fabulous thing and such a neat thing. And the guy who had told me about it originally, he said, you know, when we moved back here, this is why we moved to Homewood, because it's such a great place for stuff like that.
Thank you very much. Couple of quick things. One, who thinks they can be at the HGC interviews?
We have three.
Three.
Applicants. They're 20 minutes, so it should be done pretty quick. Yes.
So we've at least got a couple of you.
I saw one.
Three. Well, Andy's maybe out of town. But as long as, as long as.
It was originally last week and one of the applicants, I guess a week and a half ago when we started scheduling them was out of the country. So they pushed them back to this one.
Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry. So we've at least got a couple of people to do the interviews.
Five fifteen.
It's 5:15 and it's.
And the last one's at 5:50.
Yeah, 5:15, 5:30, 5:50. One of them, did you have a question?
That was, I think, the very first one that applied was.
Yeah.
Very back in the email.
I don't think so. I think one is Ward 5, one is. Okay. I think one of them, four two, I think there's two from Ward.
Okay. This has been open for a while and they're missing another one. So I'd like to go ahead and get someone on it. If, you know, if y'all can do it.
Ward 3, do you guys have some?
All right. Secondly, I love this time of year and seeing these signs for the new kindergartners go up. And it feels like there's a sign about every other house, which is a wonderful thing for Homewood. But as much as, as much as I ever remember, I'm seeing those signs everywhere and it's exciting. And seeing the new paint when I'm on my morning walk past Edgewood with the carpool numbers and everything, it's, it's exciting when school comes around. Or I'm just paying more attention to it because this is the first time in. Yeah, this is the first time in about 18 years or so that I have not had a student going to Homewood. And so all of us that have kids that are going to college in the next couple of weeks, pray for us. All of us that have the last, the first or the last child going to college in the next couple of weeks, really pray for us. But, because I'm, I know I'm leaving for Cincinnati tomorrow to go drop Andrew off at Xavier. So, and we're all very excited and I'm sure everybody else is. So to all of you doing that, God be with you. And then lastly, just wanted to thank a number of people for the bond deal. And first, I want to thank the guys from Stiefel, who always do a good job and I appreciate all their advice. I want to thank Melody and Robert again, because the amount of stuff that they've got to pull together and get together. And for whatever reason, we seem to always land on a time where interest rates are low when budget or an election or all of that is going on. So, so we appreciate you doing that in the middle of helping the mayor get his budget together. And I want to thank the mayor and Walter for putting in the time to do that and help get this together. And, and I want to thank all of you. I think y'all, I think everyone asked good questions, looked into it carefully, you know, considered the, the issue. I do think it's good for the city. I think we've done, done a good thing tonight and I think we will be able to put this money to good use with some of the capital projects that we've been trying to get done and, and that are big items and it all seemed to be coming due at the same time, which is great because they're all needed. But this will help us do that. So I think, I'm excited about that moving forward. So with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting and see everyone for our next full council meeting on the 23rd.